This conference will now be recorded.
Commissioner Eastman? Commissioner Gengler?
Here.
Commissioner Warren?
Here.
Commissioner Welch?
Here.
Mayor Rogers?
Here. All those wishing to participate in the opening prayer and pledge of allegiance, please stand.
Let's pray. Your heavenly Father, before we go into this meeting, we place ourselves before you, for you are filled with beauty and light and care deeply about us. Help us to listen before speaking. Help us to respect and understand the opinions of others. Help us to value and appreciate those we are about to meet. May your light unfold us. May your spirit guide us and may your grace abound in us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda?
There is none.
Looking for, with no addition or deletions, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Come on.
Second.
Motion made second. And all those in favor with the approval of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. At this time, one proclamation. And it is the Public Health Month. Whereas in June 1947, the elected governing bodies of the city of Art Kansas City, the city of Winfield, and the county of Cali in Kansas deemed it necessary that the public health of the population would be best served and promoted by the creation of a Joint Board of Health. And whereas in 1947, July 1947, the health status of Cali County in Kansas was appraised by E.G. Gaveran, M.D., Professor of Public Health and Preventive Medicine at the University of Kansas Medical Center in conjunction with the American Public Health Association and recommendations made to the newly formed Joint Board of Health. And whereas official function of the newly founded city Cali County Health Department were then detailed to include health education, vital statistics, communicable disease control, sexually transmitted disease control, tuberculosis control, maternal health, infant and preschool health, school health, adult health and hygiene, and general sanitation. And whereas the city Cali County Health Department has held true to the mission of public health in Cali County and continues to prevent disease, promote health in all stages of life, and protect health through the adoption and enforcement of required safe sanitation practices for 75 years. And now, therefore, I, Scott Rogers, Mayor of the city of Art Kansas City, Kansas, do hereby proclaim that July 2021 shall be celebrated as Public Health Month in Art Kansas City, Kansas, in honor of the 75 years of continuous excellent public health service from the city Cali County Health Department. Thank you. Thanks for all you do.
And thank you for the coins.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for recognizing the need for us to maintain healthy communities and to keep our citizens healthy, because that's what makes us flourish. I thank you for your support and know that we always stand ready to assist the citizens of Art Kansas City. Now, we've got to run out and see your counterparts. We're getting ready to convene there with you, so. Thanks. I'm going to have to tell you, thank you very much. Thanks for all you've done. Any comments from the audience for items not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
I move we approve consent agenda.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor of the approval of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There is no old business, moving on to new business.
Consider it important to rescuing the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol and liquor in a designated area of Wilson Park during the city's 150th celebration from 6 to 11 p.m. Friday, July 16, 2021, and during the 2021 Taka Lala Festival from 4 to 10 p.m. Saturday, July 17, 2021.
Good evening. On our annual request. So we kind of did this a little differently this year. This is sort of a combination of 2019 Beer Garden that we had a Taka Lala and expanded its size, because if you stopped by that event, it's a little bit like a tiny kettle. We got some feedback, a little more space for people to spread out. So, and then also, kind of based a little bit off Kenny DeVos' event. Not new, it's expansive is what he had asked for. And then I think last year, the Burford had the Piper Lee benefit. And so this is probably a little bit close to that. But I remember, we sort of tried to split down the half of the rotunda, like horizontally, which is, I guess, kind of awkward setup. So what's being proposed, and this would be in effect from basically Friday afternoon on the 16th through the Burford's concert that evening. And then we'd leave the fencing in place and then reopen it during the specified hours, 4 to 10 on Saturday, the 17th for Taka Lala. Same perimeter for both days, but it's not obviously open overnight. Really, this is the... So basically, this upper red line area is what we're asking for. We...
Where's that located at?
The rotunda.
The rotunda. It would, it would be, you know, traditionally, they always have the bar kind of down there in the corner.
Yeah.
It would still be the same. It would be fenced right there at that sidewalk and then go into the rotunda. So what the rotunda setup is not really reflected actively in this is that we're going to have to block about a semicircle in front of the stage, because some of the dance groups coming in that Saturday have 30 to 40 dancers. They're not all going to fit on stage. So we're going to have sort of a blocked off area in front of the stage for performances. So it makes sense to just use the snow fencing as that barrier, I guess. And so probably it'll go to about that central pillar and kind of cut the rotunda portion away. And the reason that was requested is because people like to be able to watch the entertainment and sit with beer and their food or whatever. We didn't have that option at Taka Lala 2019. But we didn't want to have a complete encompassing either, because that was going to be too big of a product. The former tennis courts are currently snow fenced off. It's a giant dirt area, obviously. It's going to remain that way. We're not going to be able to have the content done in time, of course. If the weather is dry that whole week, we could, you know, expand that out. I mean, the surface is not really conducive, but it's available space if needed. But if it's a mud pit, we're not even going to go there. So really, I just want to hear your feedback on the perimeter. But Jan is here to kind of talk about what Burford Theater is planning. This will be completely a fundraiser for Burford Theater Arts, Taka Lala. We're not actually getting any money from the department this year. That's the easiest way to handle it with a two-day event. And we're fine with that, because it's a good opportunity for them as well. So it's not a humongous area, but it is, it is a little bit bigger than what we had 2019. So she can give us how to point the staff upon it and all that.
Okay, I'm completely lost. Geographically challenged. Where do I go?
I'm wondering where they're going to park.
So where, okay, so you're... You're going to start with the visualization. Look, you're right here.
There's a tennis course up there, there's a terrain, so here's a rotunda.
So you know where the fence line is along that center ground?
No.
We would just take the fencing north, not quite to the main sidewalk.
Everything that's in red is where the...
And then bring it back in.
This is potential expansion or move it here if it's not.
Okay, and so all of the rotunda will be a beer garden?
Not all.
No, no.
Just the east face portion.
The east half, kind of right through here. They just couldn't make it up.
This is the rotunda.
Yep, there's a stage, and then here's the front half of the rotunda and then the east half of it.
Okay.
As far as parking...
I require pictures.
Right now, and this plan is evolving, but at the day, we are going to be blocking the alley at both ends, because we're actually going to have six food trucks behind the road sign day to the west. And Mike is currently working this week to start getting the wiring taking place there. So we'll actually have six boxes on the back of rotunda now that we can plug in trucks.
So the trucks will be behind the rotunda?
Some of them will. We're going to have several up on birch, so we'll close birch from the alley to at least First Street. We've got several like runoff generators, so. The Optimus trailer is probably going to be on birch. Plug it into the northeast electrical connection. And then there's another trailer that we're going to plug in as well. So we'll basically have food and that sort of thing all along the north and west parts of it. So there'll be a lot of cross traffic, but, you know, they still won't be able to remove alcohol from these specified premises. As far as parking goes, you know, we could potentially open up the north lot if actually needed to. There is still the parking lot to northwest of the park. And I'm guessing many people will probably park their country. We're not telling them to, because it's obviously not a property, but realistically, it may happen.
Okay.
There's also off-street parking as well.
Under 21, are they going to be permitted in the beer garden?
And the ordinance in front of you is asking that that would be... You want to address...
Do I come up there?
Yeah. Please.
Okay, so, um... But we, so here's what happened. We were having a concert anyways at the Burford that night. And then we found out about the 150th celebration. So we want to enhance everything that the city does and visit our city. So we said, why don't we move our concert to the park that evening instead of having it at the Burford to keep people at the park? So what we'd like to do is set up a beer garden bigger than we've had in the past. And I personally, yes, would like to be able to allow any ages to be in there. What we'll do is we will have, some of our staff will be at the gates where they come into the beer garden, and they will put wristbands on people who are over 21. And our bartenders will watch for that. We'll have staff within there watching for that. And probably, usually, we ask the police to walk through things that we have, and they're always really good about that, too. So we'll have that. I'm sure there'll be some down there. We could hire outside security if you would like us to. That's a possibility, of course, that cuts into our profit, but we could do that. And the concern about underage people being within the same perimeter as people who are drinking, I mean, that's how it is at the Burford. People come to the Burford lots of times with their kids or with, you know, their families. And we have, sometimes people are drinking, sometimes people are not. But we don't have a specific place just for people 21 to stand to drink. So, and also, you know, we've had a few events at Wilson or Island Park and or in Winfield, and they don't require us to separate it out. Have the whole perimeter blocked off. And I mean, we're pretty, um, I've trained all of my staff to watch for underage drinking, to cut people off if they appear to be intoxicated. And we're pretty vigilant about watching for that. So that's what we were doing in this situation also.
Well, Chief? I was just going to say, thank you. How do you feel about that, having everything you just heard?
I'm okay with the plan as it is. And I know that we're going to look at staffing to make sure that we get some people down there and can monitor the situation. So she had a point about mingling underage with, obviously, the drinkers. It happens at other locations. It happens in other venues like restaurants. So I don't see a problem with that, as long as we're all working together with their staff and then with us.
And we...
I feel like we can make that happen.
Yeah.
Well, I know that that was one of the things that Chief Ward was very concerned about, was having anyone under 21. And so my question, my follow-up question to that would be, if you want to take your children in or family members that are under, but what about the loose ones that are 18 or 17 to 21, and they're not with and they just want to come in?
Well, I mean, we'll be watching. We'll be watching it. One thing we've done at the Burford before is if people who kind of appeared that they're close, but they're not, we put big X's on the backs of their hands. Sometimes we do that, just so, you know, we see somebody with an X on their hand that has a beard and they're out. But we'll be watching. I really feel like this will be a, I don't feel like this, maybe I'm wrong. Like, it's kind of more of a family event, but yeah, the parents might want to have it. Come and have a couple beers while they watch the band. Or during the Taka Lala, we're going to serve Mexican beers and margaritas, you know, so they come in and watch the dancers. And I don't think it's a party, per se. I don't think, I might be wrong. I shouldn't say that, maybe, because I might be completely wrong. But I don't think it'll be that way.
And well, I think it's set up for a good time. I certainly enjoyed myself the last time I was at Taka Lala. And I want everybody to have a good time, but underage drinking is something that's...
We have zero tolerance, zero tolerance. We kick people out immediately if there's any issue. That's what we are about, fighting, smoking, maybe with smoking in the Burford ones. I mean, anything wrong, they're, they're gone.
Okay, well, I was just concerned about that and concerned about the people who are in with no reason to be in there. The parents aren't in there, you know. We saw them with children outside the orange fencing, and they were inside the orange fencing. I don't know. I don't have a problem with it, except I want to be very vigilant about...
So I will add that the Burford has had several events, especially concerts, which have been very successful. We have had no issues that have been brought to our attention about underage drinking. And again, I think it's a supervisory issue that even if we do have people that are underage within the snow fencing area, that it's going to be on us and then to make sure that we're watching and being vigilant with that.
I think if they see police officers in there, know that looking, it's going to be...
That's why...
I think it's going, that'll deter a lot of any of that idea of someone sneaking into there doing that, so.
Yeah, every time we have them walk through a couple times. But just even having that appearance, you know, that ugly hat or something, the police are walking through, and we're watching for that. Bye. Thank you.
I, too, am concerned about the comfy juveniles, but you can't stop them, so.
With that being said, I'll make a motion. We consider the ordinance accepting the application of KSA 41-719D to allow the sale and consumption of alcohol, liquor...
Designated area in Wilson Park during the city's 150th celebration from 6:00 to 11:00 p.m. on Friday, July 16, 2021, and during the 2021 Taka Lala Festival from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. Saturday, July 17, 2021.
Motion been made and seconded. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman? Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes 4-0. Next one.
Consider it important authorizing the vacating of all Compass Point Drive within the replat of Compass Point Edition, Art Kansas City, Cali County, Kansas.
That mission, this action is sort of a cleanup action. Back in March, the Compass Point area was replatted, brought for you then. However, at the time that it got filed with Richard Deeds, we found an error. We intended for these streets inside the new replat to be private. So this is the action to actually make them private. The planning commission did meet at their meeting last Tuesday, and they approved unanimously, or recommended it.
And Josh, what are they, want the streets private? Is this because they want the houses close to the streets to save money on that cement?
Part of that was under consideration, but really, it's just keep the Giants wanting control of the streets so they can, they can...
Prepare when they need to.
Okay.
Well, seeing, seeing this, you know, we'd already planned on doing this, and this is kind of cleanup. If I'll make a motion authorizing the vacating of all of Compass Point Drive within replat of Compass Point Edition, Art Kansas City, Cali County, Kansas.
I second.
Motion been made and seconded. I believe this is also a roll call vote.
Commissioner Eastman? Commissioner Gengler?
Yes.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes.
Commissioner Welch?
Yes.
Mayor Rogers?
Yes. Motion passes 4-0. Next up on the new business.
Consider a resolution approving an agreement between the city of Art Kansas City and Trans Systems Corporation of Wichita to design and construct multi-model transportation master plans in the city utilizing the U-Town Blue Shield of Kansas Pathways to a healthy Kansas grant fund for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Again. I have been working on the concept of this for almost five years now. I've been working heavily to get this sort of an agreement in front of you for at least a year. It's a good way, I'm working a little bit longer on it. I'm going to go ahead and ask you tonight to table this item so we can continue to refine the scope. Had a good meeting with Commissioner Gengler Friday, of course, before the work session, when we had some more discussion at the work session. Following that, we reached out to Trans Systems again, and I determined that the scope as currently presented is not necessarily going to deliver some of the items we were hoping for, especially as it relates to safer routes to schools. So we discussed a little bit about that. They were going to amend the scope. I haven't actually yet received that. Today, I called Virginia Barnes, who is the director of the entire Pathways program for Blue Cross Blue Shield, and I said, hey, we need a little bit more time to make sure all parties are comfortable with this, and commissioners are comfortable with what we're putting your money toward. And she agreed that it sounded like we needed just a little more time to kind of make sure all parties are on the same page. So she said that it was not going to be a problem for them. If we table this one more meeting for July 6, even though we have that resolution in place, they understand the complexity, it's kind of more to understand how the pandemic has impacted timelines and that sort of thing. And then I talked to Brett Lekowski again this afternoon, and kind of let him know what's going on with that. So he was actually traveling. He's quite busy this week. So what we're thinking right now is that next week, we'll maybe call a special traffic safety committee meeting, because we really want to get Trans Systems on a call with USD 470 and talk through that safer routes issue specific to their school buildings and see what we can do to make sure that we're getting a planning in place for their problems that they perceive, make sure we're opening those grant opportunities, and still maybe keep some master plan for the whole community that we're wanting to do as well. And so I think just getting us all on a call together and talking about it, work this out. I think we just had some communication difficulties. And, you know, to be honest, we were kind of rushing, so we're going to make sure we take the time to provide. Approved definitely the fact. So at this point, I would ask you to table. I do know that Mr. Harrison Taylor wanted to comment on the side of those.
I think getting a better, more in-depth, or more personalized plan will be a great idea. And getting USD 470 onboard this safe route school, I think that's a neat... I think, I know this has been a, being on the traffic safety committee in the past, knowing kind of what the grand plan is, just from what I can recall, there are some neat aspects that could come from this, so I agree. Let's, let's get it right.
The other wrinkle is there's some new language as Pathways Phase Two kicks off. They've really changed the process for this, but there's $100,000 available on Phase Two just for multi-mode transportation, now it's for the whole county. But we want to make sure we preserve the opportunity to maybe apply for some of that funding later. So obviously, step one, we need to execute the grant we've already received and do a good job of it. But step two is there's some language they want us to build in. So I've, I received that today. I've passed it on to Trans Systems to look over. We don't think it'll be a problem, but we just need to kind of work it in. Honestly, it's just kind of some key words they want to see, some things they want to see that reflect what's in that pledge document. And down the line, once we get this planned, we would want to look at maybe signing pledges to the city and have a little bit of access to the funds. So that's the other little thing we want to make sure we don't miss and not kill. But I'm confident we'll get this worked out. And honestly, if you look at the timeline, we weren't even going to kick this off until July 16, so a couple more weeks to refine it is not going to set back anything for us.
Sounds good, thank you.
So Andrew, another question. What's the timeframe on this?
When they go get back with you.
On scope?
Yeah.
I'm hoping we'll have that all resolved by the end of next week.
Okay. Okay. Harrison?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioner? Harrison Taylor, 525 North 12th Street. Yeah, it's disappointing, I know, and this worked very hard. It's disappointing that this isn't coming together. I think experts could really help us in a big way. But I also think that there's a lot of things that we could do, or some things that we could do that we're not doing, that could make the situation much better. First point is attendance at the Safety Commission meetings. At the last meeting, I was there, and I intended to speak, and I did speak, but half the people were there, either online or in person. Half the people were there. So I kind of felt like, the people don't feel it's important to show up. If you miss one meeting on the Traffic Commission, that's six months without being at a Traffic Commission meeting. That's a long time. So I think attendance at that commission meeting is very important for those commissioners, because traffic safety is a very important part of our community. The second point is, we need a philosophy of traffic in our town. We need, we need to decide what is important to us. We don't need an outside company to tell us, well, this is how you should think. We need to decide what is important in our community. Is it important to get from point A to point B as fast as possible? Or do we want to create safer, more user-friendly neighborhoods? Which brings me into point three. I had to push pretty hard to get, to get this, but I finally got the information of the root of the problem that's causing these traffic expressways down the streets. There is a decision in our community that streets, or the avenues, actually, they have lower traffic counts. And so they are made to yield to the streets, which have a higher traffic count. So what we're saying is streets that are slower are yielding to streets that have more traffic on them, which, what's that going to do? It's going to increase traffic on the already busier streets, which is exactly what it has done. There have been nine two-way stops put up in the last six years since, since I've lived here. And yes, I've seen the, I've seen the difference. That's why I'm always down here, you know, hammering on tables, going to meetings and stuff. We need to decide what, what is the philosophy of our city? Do we want to get from Kansas Avenue to Chestnut or the college as quickly as possible? That's what's happening now. And now that college is not in session, the streets are much quieter, much more livable. But this, this needs to be looked at. This policy needs to be looked at. And the last one is, we, we need to take a look at state of Kansas and their recommendations for speeds on streets. And my crowd will know this very well. Recommendations for residential streets by the state of Kansas is 20 to 25 miles an hour. For busy through streets like Summit, 30 to 35 miles an hour. That's the recommendation. Now, I don't think that people on the Traffic Commission are bad people. I think they're not informed. I think they don't know these last two items about the policy that we have in our community, and they don't know the policy recommended by state of Kansas. I think there are good people on that. I would ask that on the agenda for the next month's meeting, that these four points be put on there so that we can start to talk about them as a community and eventually move it over to the Planning Commission and then move it to you.
Mike?
Yeah, that's fine. The state K-DOP is working on an alternative transportation plan. And Sarah's mentioned the recommendation that's a state statute is 30 mile an hour residential. They're requesting that it be reduced to 25, each in this city. But the alternate transportation plan is looking at walking, bicycle, intermodal type, rolling, wheelchairs. There's seven goals. We had a meeting today, I'm right there, they have on it. And it's one of safety, educating the public. And they talked about adoring policy, which, I don't know if you know about that?
I do not.
Adoring policy? D-O-R-R-I-N-G policy that, for a law, it's a law, about bicycles coming up the side and you open up the door, car door. I don't quite understand that. But they're looking at all these different avenues of safety, implementing bike trails along the streets with the curbing in between. There were seven goals, and we're working on each goal. There was 53 participants today from... So it was 53 participants today from all over Kansas. Looking at the various goals and how they're gonna be implemented. Which I'll be able to come to you with that PowerPoint once I get it.
How soon, how soon, how soon is that gonna be?
I printed it out. I didn't bring it with me. I didn't know what we'd be talking about. They're looking at a, a final draft in July.
Yeah, so the last call I was on, they're talking about, they're trying to develop a toolkit for communities like us. And July, August was kind of the timeframe. And I, I volunteered to tell them, I said, will be a beta tester. We'll review the whole thing and feedback because it's exactly what we need to get us this process. This plan is really just one piece of a larger deal. So I agree completely with what Harrison said about what are we gonna be as a community? That's the conversation we need to have, you know. We have plans for surveying residents for having those meetings.
Well, that'd be a
Trans Systems coming in to tell us what
Yeah, that'd be a nice
Trans Systems specific.
Well, that, that alternative transportation type seems to fit in with part of the hike bike trail and some of the safer routes to school, which plays into the safer user-friendly neighborhood. So they're all kind of playing together here. And I think getting the alternative KDOT plan in front of us, along with what Trans World can do, will
One of the things that Blue Cross is asking us to put in the pledge is to work with the Bicycle Pedestrian Coalition KDOT in the implementation of the plan. So multi-mobilers and board are getting here along in the two years. That's where it's all going at the state.
Now, I'm not saying we're gonna put a bike lane in the middle of Summit. That's not at all what's being said. I think what's just being said is alternative self-safe routes that, looking at every possible alternative transportation type and routes that we as a community could implement and that would be beneficial and applicable to us.
That next leg of our walking trail, hiking bike trail that we're gonna start this fall, you know, including that too.
Well, I think if you've got that grounded, you could use that as a hub to where you can get to the park, when the parks are the school or something to those lines.
When we get this plan, it ought to be at the tail end of the comp plan process. It'll really slide in as an appendix off some other documents. There's still that whole chapter on transportation that's in the comprehensive plan that we're gonna have to work through long before this is done. I mean, as part of the process of having these meetings, we'll be working kind of both simultaneously. But I do want to emphasize, there will be a lot of community input in this. This isn't like staff leadership item. I'm very committed to that, but it's gonna take some time. I know the people who are seated are passionate about the subject. We see that every year.
We see a lot more people on bikes, a lot more people biking into town or using their bikes to get to and from points. A lot more in the last three to five years.
In my mind, to make sure we are serving all users, including folks that still haven't access to a vehicle. Make sure that we're providing them with safe routes to work, to school, to go shopping, honestly, and, and all those things. And that's something, you know, Ricky talked about that retail. I'm really glad he's working on what he's working on, cause we can pull that information and then give it to Trans Systems to say, hey, make sure your
Trans Systems.
Retail locations in this network we're trying to develop because that's an important thing we need to offer.
Yeah, one of the items is reduce the rate of severity of crashes involving pedestrians, bicyclists and other vulnerable users of state and local roads. Looking at the speed and the design of the roads, education, data collection, lower statutory speed limits. Pass a vulnerable road user law. That are poor driving behaving, behaviors by mandate punishments for dangerous driving behaviors. If seriously injure or kill pedestrians and bicyclists. And then adoring, that's what I was talking about.
Adoring laws?
Adoring law.
Open the door and hit a bicycle.
Bicycle's coming by.
So when's your next meeting for your traffic deal coming up?
Yeah, we're looking at July. It's actually regular on July 16th, so that was gonna be sort of a kickoff meeting for this process.
Okay, but will you have some information, Mike, for that?
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Right now, they're doing a public engagement meetings. And on, this is on the alternative transportation plan. By July, they'll have draft toolkits finalized, the recommendations, prioritization, implementation of the program. Then August, September, the final toolkits and the draft and final plan for the alternative transportation.
One other thing we're working on, it's actually due tomorrow. There's a federal program that would provide money from the federal government to do also this sort of planning. The state of Kansas has asked for communities of interest to let them know that only one community in the entire state is gonna be selected.
Oh my word.
Probably a long shot that we're gonna draw on that, just to see. So hopefully some of these things will come together and kind of enhance that initial
Well, you might put on air, this is kind of an important meeting because you're gonna start talking about this thing where you get everybody there, not just half the people there, you know? Cause you need a full agenda. I mean, people there to start working.
We always have a full agenda.
Well, I mean, I mean, the, the people there.
I don't know. It seemed like there was quite a few there though, didn't it, to you Harrison?
At the last Traffic Commission meeting, there was less than half there at the beginning of the meeting. And by about the middle of the meeting, I think we've had a quorum.
Yeah, a lot of the schools, usually the
Yeah, the school people weren't there.
Yeah. The principals from all the schools, there wasn't that many, that many there.
I was there.
You know, fewer there.
Yeah.
I was there. Harrison was there. But I took some notes from the meeting today, the public meeting today. They're looking at statewide complete street policy. They're doing an economic impact analysis is underway. I mentioned reducing the speed. They're looking, suggesting more lighting at intersections where you have pedestrians and bicycles. Talk about funding for rural communities other than like Wichita and Kansas City. And then work with state's local health agencies as far as the hike bike trails, stuff like that.
Thanks, Mike. Sounds like we're We've got some ideas and some plans in place, so I, I will, do we have to make a motion to table this or just?
Did you have anything else, Harrison, you wanted to say?
No. Thanks, Harrison. Mike, one other question on the hiking bike trail. It starts, it'll start in August.
The last phase of it?
Yeah. Well, it's delayed now, the 11th till March, but hopefully we can get started sooner. So we have to know when we get the final plans in this week.
Okay.
Cause we have this realignment again.
Okay.
One of the realignments we're doing is we originally had the trail going along the west side of the Mill Canal, the Parish Park Pool, the park there. Along the water treatment facility, but we were worried about security there, so we're moving it to the east side.
Okay.
And then from across from Madison, we'll go back to the west side. And then Lincoln, we're gonna have a sidewalk on the north side of Lincoln.
Well. Thanks, Mike. Well, I'll make a motion. We enter, we table this till the, at least the July, what's 16?
I'll second that.
Motion made and tabled. Do we have a vote? All those in favor, table on it? Any opposed? All right, next up.
Consider a resolution adopting by reference the city's 2021 comprehensive P schedule and repealing resolution number 2021-3-3390.
So if you go to page 94 on your, on your agenda packet. This is what we think that was asked for by the commission Friday to, to amend the fees for the hookups for water and sewer and, and then billing permit fees. And it'll be based on how many units per, per project.
Well, you know, I think
I talked to Dwayne about this and he'd like for us to table this until he can be here.
I think it spurs growth and we're trying it for a period of two years to see if we can get developers to come in and invest in the community. It starts with sales tax. It starts with immediate return on this. I did talk to some of the city staff and they said, you know, if we could see a 30% growth in building new developments, then we will have a successful program. And so I know a lot of the builders are excited about it. I've talked to a lot of citizens who've said, yes, that this, this should help us. It's all we can do to say, come on in, we've got places, we want you to invest in our community. It helps in a lot of ways to have developers who are interested in us. So I, I think they've waited for a long time. I'd like to see us move forward with it.
Well, I think one thing is it's gonna show that, that we're serious about this housing with our big people like Campac and Creekstone. Creekstone, I think right now is bringing in six busloads of people a day from Wichita, that surrounding area, which they could be eventually living here in town. And you talk about, you know, six busloads, 300 people, you know, you're talking about huge sales tax that they could be spending money here in Arc City, not in Wichita. And it's gonna tell our, you know, the biggest employers that we're working with them, you know, we're not against them. You know, we're trying to do, trying to do everything possible to get what they need here in this housing, you know?
I feel like it is a good deal because the citizens will be involved in also helping this happen.
Sure.
You know, with their utilities.
Absolutely.
And so it's kind of giving everybody a skin of
Well, it's the same thing. It's the same thing with Creekstone, whatever it was, 15 years ago, the first company, you know, what Creekstone at that point?
Future Beef or whatever.
Yeah, Future Beef. You know, we gave them special water rates for the first 10 years to get them started, you know? So the people, you know, sacrificed a little bit for them, you know, because of the water rates. And then when they started getting, when Creekstone started getting more successful stuff, that's been, I don't know, six, seven years ago, we raised the race up to where it should been, you know, now. And they're paying their fair share, but you know, same way with this housing, we, somewhere we gotta jumpstart this thing and that's what we're trying to do. And the biggest problems that, you know, with the, with the people we got like Brandon Gillian, that they're gonna face down the road is lumber prices and eventually going to be interest rates.
Yeah.
So there're gonna be two vehicles that they're gonna be facing, you know, down the road. But this, 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 this is kind of a small thing, but it will help them out, you know?
Yes.
You know, so it's a, I think it's a wonderful thing we're doing.
Absolutely.
I thought the people I spoke to also felt like there was really not going to be that big a sacrifice when you think of the return.
Sure. Well, it's all about sales tax. And we'll get the, sales tax immediately from this thing. We get them living here and then plus they'll get the revitalization that, you know, that 200, up to $250,000, you know? But we'll get 10% of that, but we'll also be getting the sewer and water right off the bat. So we're not like
And franchise fees.
Yeah, and the franchise fees, still on top of that. So it's not like we're not, you know?
Getting some.
Yeah.
Yeah. So how do you need that motion to be? Just to approve the addition of this fee schedule?
Yeah, just be approving by reference the city's 2021 comprehensive. And I think the good thing is getting it put on paper is it's got parameters around it. I think it makes it more, it's easier for the city and for us when people come asking, hey, yeah, here's, here's what it is now. I hate, I didn't like the idea of just randomly doing it as people came and asked with parameters around it and, you know, boundaries, so to speak. It gives some direction onto what's required. And I think it's, it will jumpstart. Hopefully, we've been talking about housing needs for the last three years, so let's, let's do
Need more developers now. We need 300 homes yesterday and we don't have that.
And we've been saying that for five years and if this is the way to get
I think it's gonna happen.
30, 40, 50 more units or, yeah, let's, you know, on top of the other 50 being built.
And the good thing is the commissions in the future can keep it going or they can end it as they see fit with what's going on.
The only question I've had is someone say, what if they don't get them built in those two years? And that's the only question.
Well, and I think we kind of went over that, that
And you may have less of that here.
If, you know, this is as much a contract or verbal contract or commitment on their part. And Josh and I talked about it, you know, if there was a situation that came up and something that they couldn't get their product from wherever because of this reason, then he could determine that, you know, they've done everything they could. He and Randy could bring it to us for an extension on that particular issue.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
Sounds good.
So being said, I want to make that motion that he said, that she said.
I'll second that.
Motion that he said and she said? There you go.
Motion's been made and seconded. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 4-0. Next up, I think we're on city manager update from agenda.
What's he gonna say? What's he gonna say?
Well, different activities coming up, so I don't know if you want me to re-complement you all or get in your own. But one, one item that's not on here is on Thursday, the 17th. Chamber Coffee will be at the hospital at the new birthing and delivery suites at 10 a.m. And I believe they have ribbon cutting and stuff after that, so make sure you put that on your schedule. Then the Cali Indoor Market will be the 16th from 5 to 8 p.m. at Burford. And the Arc City Community Band. Thursday, June 17th at 7:30, Wilson Park. There is a June 10th celebration, Saturday, the 19th from 10 a.m. to 6 p.m. at Lovey Watson Park. They'll have food vendors and information booths and pop-up story walk and things like that going on. That event will be followed by the EMS, fire EMS, police departments popping apart. That'll be 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. on the, over at Wilson Park.
Fire and EMS is doing popping apart?
And police.
Okay. I was getting ready to say, they just fronted all of we
I imagine it'll turn to some type of competition, won't it, between you guys?
It's gonna really well.
Presbyterian Manor will host its annual Carl Fattley Summer Salsa Ball Drop on June 21st from 6 to 8. That'd be in the front lawn of the Manor. Arc City Farm and Out Market, June 22nd, 29th and July 6th, 4 to 6 at the Wilson Park Pretende. And then the Arc City Police Department will host its Coffee with a Cop from 2 to 4 Thursday, June 24th at Lakeview Estates. And Chamber Commerce Annual
Lakeview South 6th. Huh? South 6th? Oh.
And actually Chamber Commerce's annual banquet will be replaced by a barbecue bash. And that'll be from 5 to 10 p.m. on the 25th at Chestnut Avenue. And next city state, city commission work session will be Friday, July 2nd. Do you want to cancel every schedule or?
That's fine. What, the, on the 2nd?
Yeah, the work session.
Well, it's a long weekend for some.
I'm working Monday, so.
It, it does matter how city staff handling Monday.
We were off that day.
They're off Mondays.
So if we, do we know of anything that's coming up that has to be dealt with on that besides Andrew's deal, which we've been
I've got a couple of things here as I, after finishing this part, that we could do or we could put off. I mean, we could push to a further date out too, so.
Uh, what do you guys think? I don't mind either way.
And then that's me. I don't mind either way.
Are you going
Well, I think it's, I don't know as much about us, if it's staff, they gotta put it together, you know? I mean, do they want to do that or do you want to find another date, you know? Because you got, they're not gonna be working on Monday, cause that's gonna be a holiday and so
Tuesdays are a meeting.
I'll leave it up to you. I mean, we can always find things to talk about. I don't, but I, I know you guys, you guys are just kind of valuable too, so I don't want, you know, be
Would you take it away?
Well, I don't think so.
Let's just cancel when some pressing comes up. I was outside for the staff. So.
Done.
And then the fire, annual fireworks display will be July 4th at 9:30 p.m. And then
What day is that gonna be?
On July 4th, Sunday. It'll be followed by the Independence concert. And then of course, City Hall, opposite, in opposite Black Fifth. So remind, we got the, the League of Municipalities Leadership Conference Friday and Saturday, so several of you are signed up. So we probably need to get together on departure times and things like that arranged. I put a, a copy of the Parish Park Pool Facility Evaluation Report.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Yes. So it, it basically goes into what, what's, what's going on at that, at the facility. It gives a, an estimated cost to repair or renovate that, the current facility. And then it, it gives an option and basically a recommendation of the, of the consultant was, we probably need a new pool. And there's a, a concept there and, and a price that's not a lot higher than renovating what's already there. So that, that would be something, um, in a future work session, we'll have the consultant come and do that report. He can explain.
I'd like to see that July. Can you make it at a July or August meeting?
Yeah, I think so. It, that's no problem.
Be nice to start talking about it and get something.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's fine. I'd like to see it, whatever works with his schedule.
Yeah, that's, that'll work. Um, and then, um, Monday, I went over to, um, Winfield, Cali County had a skills gap analysis done, uh, for workforce. And, um, so we have a copy over here, and what I'd like to do is have Kerry come in and deal with, with you guys in the work session one of these days. There's some things as, um, that as a government entity, maybe we could help with, um, in that. And then obviously as an employer, there's things that we might want to consider, uh, to help, you know, to, um, attract workforce to our, to our organization. Obviously, some of the, the big problems in, in our county are soft skills. That's, you know, to show up to work and, um, things like that.
On time.
Yeah, on time. The, uh, yeah, a higher percentage of, of, compared to the state of Kansas, we have a higher percentage of a problem there. Um, there's, there's some hard skill issues, but I think the soft skills are the bigger problem. Um, the other two things that really rose to the top was the availability of childcare in our, in our communities here. Um, that affects workforce drastically. And then transportation was the other thing that, that was, rose up to the top. And then in this report, they come out with 12 different recommendations. I see they have to do all of them, but they're saying if you do some of them, it could drastically help the workforce issues that are going on. But again, it all plays into housing and, um.
Is there, is there any grants out there for, for that we could look at down the road for? I know Creekstone is looking for, you know, their employees, you know, for daycare type stuff and.
I, I don't know if this is the place to spin it, but the, the consultant, um, talked about funds that we're receiving, um, for, for the COVID.
Okay.
Could actually be used to build facilities. Now, I don't know that that's what we want to do. Uh, the county's got quite a bit, is getting quite a bit of money too, so. But they, they did say that those dollars that we'll be receiving, um, either at the county or the city levels, could be used to build facilities. And then you could attract private, um, operators to run them. But, um, again, that's, I don't know that that's the best use of that money for our community, but I don't, I don't know other, we'll have to look and see what other things are out there a bit then. So again, I want to have Kerry come visit with you guys about this and kind of fill you in on it. It was pretty good information. And then on the housing assessment tool, we're, we're going to have that, uh, hopefully pretty well wrapped up by the 22nd. Um, and just, all we need to do is polish it after that a little bit, but, but I want to get turned in really close to that time period, um, so that we don't miss out on opportunity to do the HyAC.
What do you mean, the HyAC?
So the HyAC, um, that's the Housing Interagency Committee.
See how excited he was to tell you what those letters mean?
That, that's where we're, as a community, we'll go before, um, Department of Commerce, Kansas Housing Resource Corporation, USVA, um, community or, uh, Rural Development. And then, uh, what's the mortgage? There's a federal mortgage program. They'll be there, and we present our hat to them. The idea is we'll want to have representatives of the community, um, their, um, commissioners, city staff, you know, business people, representatives from the schools. And we'll, we'll present to them our community and the housing issues that we're having. And then they, from that, they recommend programs that they have in their agencies that could help with that. And so that'll be, um.
And when's that going to take place?
That, it, that'll be the 21st of July.
Okay. And we don't know if that's, I told Andrew I could go there, that's, you wouldn't know if it's going to be in person or?
Yeah, we don't know yet. Hopefully it will be in person because it'll be.
That'd be more, that's a lot, always a lot better. A lot better.
That's all I had.
Thanks. Do you guys have anything?
I'll make a motion adjourned.
You got anything out there?
Second.
By the way, the correction, the Farm and Out Market is from 4 to 6:30. Makes a big difference.